You are?
Call the meeting order for the Wycomico County Council December 1st, 2015. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's prayer and pledge allegiance, please do.
Godfather.
Lord in heaven, heaven in heaven, the kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. For this our first trust is, we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. With thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. First item on the agenda will be entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from November 17th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from November 17th.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes in reference, that was in reference to the school board members, by the way. Motion passes. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session from November 17th for the legislative breakfast discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion or corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, minutes are approved. Good evening, Mr. Kramer.
Good morning, Mr. President, gentlemen of the county council, ladies and gentlemen. First order of business this morning, or this evening, comes about the first Tuesday of December of each year pursuant to Article III of the county charter, Section 303, Officers. I will read it as brief. At its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by vote of the majority of the total number of council members established by this charter, a president and a vice president. The president, or in his absence, the vice president, shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings. On all questions before the county council, excuse me, at all questions before the council, the president and vice president shall have and may exercise the vote to which each is entitled as a council member. Moving on then, the floor is open for nominations of the officer of vice president, county council. And there are no seconds required for nominations.
Would like to nominate Matt Holloway.
All right, Mr. Matt Holloway's name has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? If there are no other nominations for vice president, if it please the council, we'll dispense with a roll call vote, and by voice vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Mr. Matt Holloway, congratulations that you're being reelected for county council vice president for the year 2016. Would you like to conduct the election for president, or would you like me to continue? What is your preference?
Go ahead.
All right, then, the floor is open for nominations to the office of president for the Wycomico County Council for 2016, nominations.
I'll nominate John Cannon.
Mr. John Cannon's name is in nomination. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, again, with your pleasure, we'll dispense with a roll call vote. All those in favor of Mr. John Cannon, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections? Mr. Cannon, it looks as though you're county council president. Congratulations both of you gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Thank you to the council.
The next order of business for your consideration this evening is Resolution Number 167 at the request of the county executive approving an agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland, and the city of Fruitland for the enforcement of fire prevention within corporate limits of the city of Fruitland and authorizing the county executive to execute the agreement. Mr. Kevin Wright is in the audience, if you have any questions as to how this will work.
Entertain a motion from council to accept Resolution 167, 2015. Second? Discussion?
Did I miss it? Is there a term on this?
If you'd join us, thanks.
No. If either entity were desirous of dissolving their relationship, that would be all it would take.
Kevin, if you want to give us an overview, feel free.
Certainly.
For the public as well. And would you get closer to the mic, please?
Yes, good evening, council. I guess what you need to know is that nothing's changing. It's pretty much been a gentleman's agreement with my office since the early days of Ed Torbert, and nothing's changing, and now it's just in paper, essentially. My role is the same tomorrow that will be last week, as will be two weeks from now. We're just formalizing a, pretty much a gentleman's agreement that we've had in place forever. Literally, no operational changes will take place in my office at all.
Okay.
How does this work with the towns like Sharp Town and, you know, the other municipalities? I mean, obviously Salisbury's an exception, but outside Salisbury?
I would probably be safe to guess that you'll see more of these come before you for other locales that don't have. We are the only fire code enforcement agency in the county. The city fire department has a inspection staff, but they don't do the things that I do, so we'll take care of the easy ones first. And again, nothing's changing. I know the same reason that Weston is here for your next resolution is that we're just formalizing what's already in place. Every municipality from Hebron to Delmar to Fruitland to all the other locals, they utilize our services. We retain any money that's come in for a permit or any fine or fee, it comes to the county. Have zero, pretty much zero issues in a negative way with any of the municipalities, so.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 167, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright.
And next for your consideration is Resolution Number 168, 2015, at the request of the county executive approving an agreement between Wycomico County, Maryland and the city of Fruitland for the enforcement of stormwater management within the corporate limits of the city of Fruitland and authorizing the county executive to execute the agreement. Mr. Weston Young, Director of Public Works, is here if you have any questions.
Entertain a motion from council to accept Resolution 168, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, any questions?
Can you briefly tell us what the enforcement of stormwater management is?
Sure, sure. Good evening. Similar to the fire agreement, this is something that the county has been providing for the city of Fruitland. Typically with enforcement of stormwater, it is when development plans are submitted, they're required to put in stormwater treatment, depending on the size, if you're under a certain threshold, none is required, but as the bay cleanup efforts get more stringent, there's more stormwater requirements. So we need to make sure that they're shown on the plans, and then we need to make sure they're installed correctly, and now there's a lot of emphasis that they're being maintained. You can put in, you know, a ditch or a pond, and if you don't maintain it, you can have an old growth tree in it and seeming like no time at all. So it's primarily that. Similar to the fire service, we get the fees that come in, you know, in this particular agreement, the city of Salisbury and Delmar are the two that do their own review. So if they do it, they have to provide the staff, but they get the fee, they get to have a, you know, some control over it, you know, it's typically, we're all following the same state guidelines, but the review times can sometimes be a little more, I guess, controlled by the municipality should they decide to take that on. But as it was written, coming down from the state, Maryland Department of the Environment was the county needed to reach out to each municipality and say, please let us know if you are going to do this or not. And again, only Delmar and Salisbury are the ones that have taken us up on it. So Fruitland is one that we've historically been doing, and I want to say for the last 10 years, I think they attempted it, but had shortcomings with staff or knowledge base or whatever, and yeah, similar to the gentleman's agreement, this is something that formalizes that agreement.
But Salisbury and Delmar, are they exempt in the code itself, are they exempt in the code?
Um, I don't think.
Was there some qualification that they?
You know, I'd have to see what the specific code is, but we should have an agreement with everybody that's decided to take us up on using our services.
Mr. Cannon, to answer your question, the county codes spells out the minimum regulations for Wycomico County in compliance with the Department of, Maryland Department of the Environment Regulations. It is not incumbent upon any municipality to utilize our regulations unless they choose to have their own.
So, so the code, the animated code of Maryland requires some process, and in this case, the Wycomico County takes that responsibility on unless the particular municipality agrees to handle it themselves, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Just curious. Any other questions?
I'm just interested in how it's going to be maintained.
In terms of?
How are you going to maintain it? Do you just ride around once a year?
We have, we have an inspector that he looks at it as it's being installed, verifies, we get as built after it's constructed, and then Maryland has a three-year maintenance period, so every three years we need to make sure, and it's usually more, with some education, it's usually more cost-effective if they maintain it annually rather than waiting till we come and say, you need to clean it up. But yeah, it's something that with proper maintenance, and we have adequate staff at the moment, one gentleman that's trained in it, and we have a few backups as well.
Joe?
What kind of enforcement capabilities do you have if they don't take care of it? Not just necessarily municipality, but ones, you know, from the.
You know, I'd have to look at what the code says, but in most cases, people have played ball. They see the importance of it, they know that, you know, we could go to enforce, we don't want to. You know, we always try for education first and just, you know, they tend to learn the importance of it. Sometimes where you get the issue is when you get a new property owner that doesn't know the history or why that's there, and they're like, I can put an extra parking space there, and then they're the ones we need to, we need to work with. But yeah, I'd have to look at the code, but again, enforcement's sort of a last ditch option in my book.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 168, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seale.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 169, 2015, at the request of the executive confirming the appointment of D. Patrick Scott to the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center Commission.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 169, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 169, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 170, 2016, at the request of the county executive to make an application of funds to various narcotics task force accounts from Fund 12 Narcotics Task Force in the amount of $167,224. Ms. Leslie Lewis, Director of Finance, and the captain, major?
Who's the captain?
Todd Richardson.
Entertain a motion to accept Resolution 170, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Captain, how are you?
Captain Richardson, I had a momentary loss of memory there, I didn't mean to.
You can promote me if you want.
I didn't think you'd mind.
Christmas isn't here yet, Captain.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Just for the public and to clarify Mr. Kramer's earlier comments, clarify for us.
I'm Captain Todd Richardson from the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Leslie Lewis is Director of Finance.
Thank you, great. Can you give us an overview? Or would you like us to? We'll ask for questions first, questions from council members.
Let the mic start.
The only question I had really was with the transfer of the funds to these, to the different areas that were noted here, what is that, what do those itemizations represent?
To begin with, the money when it comes in.
Right.
Into Fund 12, it's a fiduciary, that's a temporary holding account. We are not to do anything with that money until we get an order from the judge that states it has been forfeited to this wind tip money, or it could go back to the person they see the fund from.
Right.
Then we take action. It has to go back to the person and call a check. Yeah, if it goes to the wind tip, then we transfer it to a special revenue fund, and that is Fund 56. So as you see here, the appropriation below is exactly how they would like to have the money spent. Now, Fund 12 does not have anything to do with Fund, the general fund, so it is not the county's money.
Yeah.
And Fund 56 is a special revenue, so again, it's not the county's money, it is Wind Tip's money.
Right.
So they, you can correct me, Todd, Wind Tip will have meetings and vote that they agree for it to be spent this way. Then we get notification, and we bring it before you and ask you to let us, you know, put this in the budget so when the invoices come in, we have proper authority to discuss the funds.
Okay.
At the beginning of the fiscal year, when we first produced the budget, I guess it started in 2013, we were requested to put in an annual budget, and if we had additional costs throughout the year, then we would come back in front of you, but they were just trying to get a generalization of what the budget was. There are certain things that they pay for, like their electric bill, fuel bill, those type of things that are standard operating, and then everything else that's purchased is as a result of whether or not seized funds become available.
Sure.
They're required by their charter to keep three years of operating money within their account, those type of things. Some years are not big years for seizures because maybe they are longer cases or whatever, takes longer periods of time. Sometimes large amounts of money come in in short periods of time.
Right.
And that's how, and that's why we work with a budget, and at this point, equipment is needed, the money is there, and the board itself, which the board is represented by the sheriff's office, the chief of police from Salisbury, the chief of police from Fruitland, the state's attorney, and I'm missing one.
State police?
And the state police, the drug command commander of the state police, so.
Does, a couple of questions. Is this 100, do you get 100% of this money that's seized?
It's according if it comes in federally or through the state, the state's attorney takes a percentage because he spends a lot of time working on the case. Federally, they automatically take, it used to be 20%, I believe it's 25%, and then it's dispersed amongst, but it goes through the federal court system as well. And a lot of times on larger cases, there may be four or five different units that are involved, and then at that point, the treasury makes the decision as to how the money would be dispersed, who spent the most manpower, who came up with the better information, you know, because they go over multiple jurisdictions, so that's why a lot of the money's come in. But generally, I think that is at 75% now, it's not 100.
Fund?
It's basically a processing fee for them and all the money, all the time they spend in court fighting for this money.
Fund 12, is it used for anything else other than the money, these seized funds? Is it a fund that more monies from different locations come in?
It's state, it is state money. So it could come from different, it's C, it all, it is all asset seizures, but it could come.
It could come, yeah. That's all it's used for, in other words, there's no money that comes from any other, other than drug seizures or stuff like that?
Absolutely, and we're really not, I get too into accounting, but you're really not to touch this until you transfer it into the special revenue fund. And it is a, just think of it as an escrow account.
Okay.
Or, I feel like you're a fiscal, yeah, you're not to spend.
Could we get a printout of all these funds?
Sure.
That'd be great, because I wasn't aware of it.
I'll be glad.
I was trying to figure out what Fund 12 was. I know we had created a fund for, I think, economic development before it actually became an item, an itemization in Munis, isn't that correct? We didn't.
It's still in the general fund.
Okay, I thought it was like in Fund 51 or something.
Well, that's like the office it's in.
Okay, it was in an office, all right, you're right.
And I'll have to admit, I didn't, Munis was set up before my time.
Right.
To me, it is confusing.
Yeah.
So I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. It's like, okay, that'd be nice. The only question, in whose name are the vehicles titled?
Wycomico County.
Wycomico County.
Yes, and that is more or less an operational type thing, as well as money being handled through Munis is handled through the sheriff's department, because we were set up as the one department that could handle this. The whole fund could go somewhere else and someone else could do it, but the Wycomico County as in general was a better fit for handling this, and I'm the one who handles the Munis side for Wind Tip. I attend all their meetings, the board meetings and all that, and I'm closely related to their spending and all that, so when they do their purchase orders and all that, it's run through me, so it's done through county procedures. They follow county procedures to spend their funds.
Okay, I understand. Is the, when we receive an inventory of vehicles from the sheriff's department, are these vehicles included in that, or are they always set as a separate item for the narcotics task force?
They are set as a separate item, but they tend to roll over vehicles rapidly because of the way, the type of operation it is, so they tend to change out vehicles quickly.
Okay.
And they take care of all their registration funds and all that, it all comes from, there are no county funds used for Wind Tip whatsoever, it is all seizure funds.
Which is, which is bad and good, right?
Yes.
What happens when we chase all the criminals out of Wycomico County?
It's not going to happen in my career.
Larry?
So all of these items, such as the vehicles, are not used by our deputies, just the task force?
Even though we have, each agency that has a vote, voting member of the council also has employees that work for Wind Tip.
Okay.
So when they rapidly roll over these vehicles, you all don't handle that, the task force handles it?
They handle the, that part of it, yes.
So we never see the transactions?
Yes, we see the transactions, we see, it all comes through our office, but they handle the manpower side of it.
Okay.
And as you see, there is a request for a part-time salary position, and that is for to handle some of the day-to-day admin stuff, rather than having an experienced narcotics officer off the street dealing with a day-to-day administrative position type thing.
Right.
And they have the funds within their account to pay for that right now. If they don't have that, then that position will go away.
Sounds like you're busy.
Any other questions?
I just want to say, I'm going to thank Captain Richardson, I had some questions that I emailed him yesterday, and he was generous with his time to give me a call and talk to me about that, so thank you for being forthcoming and being willing to take time out of your day to answer my questions, for being here.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 170, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 171, 2015, at the request of the county executive, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the governor's office for children in the amount of $25,000. A Wycomico partnership for families and children submitted a grant application for, to carry out activities in the development of community, of a community plan. And Ms. Diana Burnell, I believe is here.
I have her assistant.
Your assistant, would you come forward, please?
Good evening.
Ms. Lisa.
Okay, hang on one second, entertain a motion to accept Resolution 171, 2015.
So moved.
Second. And second, thank you. If you would just want to give us a brief overview, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we're just doing a Munis assessment, gap analysis. The governor's office for children set down some new strategic goals, there are four specific strategic goals that he would like us to meet. We don't have to meet all of them, but we have to figure out which one of them, or which several of them are here in our county, so that's the point of the Munis assessment and gap analysis, and this is going to let us be able to do that.
Okay.
Who's going to actually perform the analysis? Do you guys do that yourself, or do you outsource that to?
We're going to have, we have somebody in the budget for consultants and contractual services, so we'll probably go to someone who has experience in creating surveys and possibly graduate students.
This is a reoccurring grant, or is this the first year this grant's been awarded?
No, this is a one-time, this is totally new, we had to apply for it, but they're asking us to do the Munis assessment, so we can get this information from Wycomico.
Do you have in-house staff that applied for the grant, or is it just someone that's working that?
Yes, Diana applied.
She did, yeah, okay. And any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 171, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes, thank you very much.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 172, 2015, at the request of the county executive making a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of Emergency Services in the amount of $33,596. The department is requesting the funding to purchase a 2016 Chevrolet Silverado, as well as a cap-and-slide-out unit which will replace a 2003 Dodge service truck that unexpectedly suffered complete engine failure.
Mr. Shipley, if anyone. Entertain a motion from council to accept Resolution 171, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The supplemental appropriations to replace a vehicle is a 2003, it has 130,000 miles on it, okay? And it's been a very good service vehicle, but it's tired, and they're digging it to the shop, and it cannot be repaired. The vehicle is vital to the operation of the department. It is used for emergency callbacks, it's to keep the county public safety radio system operational at all times. The service vehicles that are used by the radio techs in the division carry both diagnostic and they carry repair equipment. Most of the work that they do perform during normal business hours and even when they're on call is out in the field. They go to the tower sites, or they go to the fire stations where they work on the equipment. That's what, that's why the vehicles are so, so important to us, so we can get the stuff repaired quickly. Some of the equipment that they do repair, there's some of the numbers that were totaled that they're involved in, we maintain about 592 mobile units throughout the county, and there's approximately 2,000 portable units that they're responsible for making sure up and running, so our first responders have the communication at any time.
Okay. John?
Mr. Shipley, the truck just had 130,000 miles on it, which means you put it 10,000 miles on it a year last, and do you have another vehicle that you're using for this currently, or have you been using a number of other vehicles?
We have three vehicles that are utilized by the radio division. Each member of the shop radio division does have a vehicle, so we're operating one down right now.
Any other questions?
Some people would say 130,000 miles is a lot of miles. My vehicles are just getting started by then.
Joe, you want to buy it from the county?
Who does your service work? I mean, have they all been changed regularly and?
Yes, we actually, we.
And maintained?
Yes, sir, we go through actually a weekly inspection of operational, it has to be done by the operators of the vehicles. We do a comprehensive inspection once every quarter, and we maintain the oil changes through the shop, but it's, I think it's 3,500 miles they have to go over, and we're very aggressive in wanting to keep the vehicles up and maintain them.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 172, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Good evening, Mr. Roser.
Good evening, Mr. President. I have one small item for you tonight. It has to do with our fuel system. I call your attention to my memo dated November 20- I call your attention to my memo dated November 25th, 2015. The fuel project, as many of you know, is a continuous audit as defined by Robert Minardi and others in, in our industry. The last complete audit of the fuel system was December 2014. This time, we tested usage, AIM-2 status, which is commonly known as fuel rings, and the storage tanks. AIM-2 usage remains a problem. The use of Pro Keys is still too common. We recommend that the county devote more resources to compliance, and if that fails, the county may want to reevaluate the system. Storage tank calculation was within parameters. We have a problem there, too, with Pro Keys and associated lack of controls, along with some equipment failures that reduce the effectiveness of those controls. We have evidence that Rose Division intends to redouble their efforts, and this office, with your permission, plans to monitor and offer advice. We've been invited to the table on that. And I would also like to post this memo on the website, and we will follow up the fuel system as a matter of course, again, within the next quarter. I'll be glad to address any questions.
Any questions from council?
I just don't know. Is a Pro Key like a credit card type?
I meant to bring one. Janice actually had one for me to bring for show and tell today, but I forgot to go by and get it. It's, it's a small device, about that size, that goes on your, a key ring.
Right.
And it's an electronic device that activates the, the pump so that it will operate. The problem with the Pro Key is it's not attached to a vehicle. So if we're looking at that as compared to the AIM-2 units, that Pro Key can fuel anything. The AIM-2 units in the vehicles can only fuel that vehicle. And although the Pro Key data is assigned to a particular vehicle as its pump, it's not attached to it.
Are there any other counties doing it any differently?
I really haven't looked at other counties. I plan to do that as a matter of course going forward, because we do seem to be having some difficulties with the, with the system that's in place. Additionally, we have some problems with having to call repair service from Chesapeake, Virginia, which causes time lapses, and of course, the use of Pro Keys in the interim and the cost of getting them up here. So, but I have very strong evidence that Rose Division personnel are aware of this and are looking into it, and we expect some kind of solution going forward. It may be something as simple as replacing a few of the pumps. It may be something as simple as designating a mechanic at Rose Division with the primary responsibility for making sure that these units are operating properly and given the time to do so. Or we just may have a bad system. I don't know, but we'll monitor it and see what, you know, the county needs to do. And just like anything else, has, has to make the cost-benefit analysis for the county. We always weigh the risk and, and the controls against the cost. And if the cost is, is way out of the range of something the county should be spending on this particular risk, we'll, we'll not do it, of course, they'll not do it. But this is something that's ongoing, and we will, we'll continue to monitor it.
Go.
Yeah, you know, we go back to when we had our problems at the landfill. That's what initiated all this. And I think, John, you were here, maybe some of the other council folks weren't, but the, we might have, when we picked up this AIM system, that probably looked like the best system at the time, you know, but there's, good chance there could be something new out there now that's, that's better. And Steve, do, you said it meets the parameters, are you talking about the, the loss between, you know, where the, where the numbers don't match up as far as the gallons go? Is that what you were talking about?
No, this particular case, we, we test the fuel that goes into a storage tank located on a, a delivery vehicle. So there's equipment in the field that the county has that cannot go to the fuel pumps at Rose Division. An example of that would be a tub grinder at, at the landfill or something like that. So we have to pump the fuel into the tank, in the tank truck, and then take it to the location, pump it out. The parameter is, for me, in this test, is the size of that tank. So we measure where it goes in, we measure where it comes out, the difference should be within that 1,000 gallons that that tank holds. And we found that to be true in this case. There, there was no variance there.
You have evaporation, too?
You have that, but this not, this is not as serious as, as the thermal displacement that we have in, in the very large storage tanks over at Rose Division. And we have, which I'll test next time, we have a spreadsheet set up for, for the fuel inventory over there that calculate those parameters within, within the limits based on the temperature. So we've done some work there as well.
Has, has the internal auditor looked at any other systems that may work better than the system that we're using now?
I have talked to the head mechanic at, at Rose Division. He indicates that he receives trade magazines with some of these other machines, of, of systems in them, and, and we're to take a look at them, and I haven't heard from them. It's, it's been recent, so I assume he'll, he'll let me know something on that.
Is, is part of the reason for the Pro Keys not being attached, is it more, I mean, I would imagine it's more convenient for the employees there, the way, you know, kind of with the keys not being attached? I mean, so how much hassle factor is there to the employees there? And I mean, and I understand that given the history of what happened before, there's some need for a little more hassle, you know, we're a little more sensitive towards that sort of stuff, but I mean, is that part of the issue here? Is, is the system kind of burdensome on the employees to use?
I think it's burdensome in, in relation to downtime. If you have crews out there that are trying to mow the roads in Wycomico County, and the, the fuel truck goes to deliver the fuel and it fails, the, the guys don't want that tractor sitting there all day waiting for somebody to come and fix the fuel ring if they can fill it with, with a Pro Key, and they do so. Another problem there, again, is, is having to call people out of Chesapeake, Virginia to come and fix it. So I don't think it's a matter of inconvenience for our employees. I think it's more of a matter of the avoidance of downtime.
How many times a month is this person having to come from Chesapeake, Virginia? Is it?
I looked at.
Three times?
Four times? I looked at three of the bills from, from the last time they were here. Generally, they come, you know, Joe, I would actually have to get that for you, but I've looked at, they've been here twice in the last 30 days or so, I think.
Any other questions? Mr. Roser, thank you very much. We appreciate the, your work on this. As, again, I have to ask you this again, because I'm getting used to the whole format. Is this something by consensus that you need, or will we do it at a future date through resolution?
Well, normally, no. As a matter of course, these memos that are sort of attached to, if you look at the website, attached to a main audit, we kind of run them out underneath of it. We just need kind of a consensus that, that council doesn't have any objection to posting this on the website.
Council approval as far as posting? Very good?
Yep.
Very good? All right, thank you, Mr. Roser.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. At this time, we now open the floor to the public in general, if there are any, anyone that'd like to come forward for public comments, please do. The podium is over there. It's a thin, it's a thin crowd tonight. Seeing none, that, that concludes the public hearing. Any council comments for the evening? Council comments?
I just got something real quick. Just going to give everybody an update. The rural counties coalition had their economic summit November 9th. There were counterrepresentatives, state delegates, and representatives from the governor's office there. The topics were topics that we've kind of all heard a lot recently, the heroin epidemic, body cameras, how we use revenues, and the sprinkler mandate, and the rural counties chagrin with the sprinkler mandate. The keynote speaker was the president of the senate, Mike Miller. And he was, was actually, it was not a very joyful speech by Mike Miller. The gist was how the rural counties don't have power, and how they need the large counties in order to get anything accomplished in the state, which is the truth, I guess, but just disheartening for him to come out bluntly and say that.
Truth hurts sometimes.
Yeah, it was not a very joyous occasion.
Was he sort of saying that as if we shouldn't get out of line?
Just informative. Yeah.
No, it was a tough lot, right?
That's right. That's exactly what it was.
Joe, go ahead.
This Saturday at the Holly Center at eight o'clock, the teddy bear ride. Purdue has been putting that on for 32 years, and everybody's invited to go out and experience that. They gave, they give the clients rides in the truck. And what I want to really say here is, we hear a lot about the poultry industry and the ill effects it, it may have on the eastern shore, and I'd like to invite all those folks that criticize poultry industry to come to that Saturday morning so they can see some of the good things that, or more of the good things that poultry companies do for the, for the local area, so.
It's a great event. Any other council comments? Under presidential comments, first, I'd like to thank the council for their confidence in allowing me to represent them as president for the next year. I appreciate that very much. Also, just to note, the Delmar Christmas Parade is this coming Saturday, and the Salisbury Christmas Parade is this coming Sunday. I apologize, I will not be able to attend either one because I'll be out of town. So the candy distribution drops by 20%.
What an assumption.
And also Commerce Secretary Gill will be in town next Tuesday, December 8th. He'll be at the Tri-County Council Building, which is on Route 50 East at 1:30. This is the Secretary of Commerce, you know, wanting to know what the Wycomico County wants to do for economic development. So he's, it's, it's an open house where he just wants people to come and discuss what they think that the state of Maryland can do to help, you know, Wycomico County grow. So it's, it's a very great, it's a great opportunity. Again, it's Tri-County Council, he'll be there at 1:30, and then at Brew River at 5:30. So this is a whole day event. Excuse me? So it's a whole day event. That'll be at Brew River. And that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can.
John?
Yes, sir.
Did you want to mention the legislative breakfast?
Yes, the legislative, what's the date on that, Wayne? The 12th? And that's, is that in Flanders or normandy? Flanders? There's a legislative breakfast, I'll read it right off the list here. There's a legislative breakfast Saturday, December 12th at 8:00 a.m. This is the Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center. This is where the executive and the council have the opportunity to meet with the, our eastern shore delegation and review all the concerns that we have, that we'd like to see addressed in Wycomico County over this next legislative session. It is open to the public, and we certainly would, would love to have you there.
We also have Wycomico that week.
What about the county executive's public hearing? Isn't that this Thursday?
It's coming up. That's under president, that's under presidential comments.
I thought you were done.
No, I was, I had one more left, sorry. No, you're right. I think I was wrapped up. The, the executive is going to have the, the capital improvement plan, a public hearing, and it's going to be here in this chamber, right, the government office building, and that's going to be Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday night. What time is it? Six? Six o'clock? Okay, so right here at six o'clock. And so if the public would like to be here and, and give their input as to what they'd like to see, capital improvements in Wycomico County, that is your chance.